So you're in.
Definitely appreciate it. So with that, we do have a forum. And please, we'll open the meeting. Channel three.
I'd like to lead us to the United States of America. Neither of our public where we just stand. One nation under God. In this call. Very.
Welcome.
Don and Childs here. Christine Johnson here, Tom Backers.
Here.
Greg Bradley.
Here.
Albert Keys.
Okay, recognition of visitors. Please, if you have something to say, sign in, print. So we know who you are. Basically, what we have to say. We have people on Zoom?
Yes.
I know there was one that. So. For those concerned, the House bill. The number on in the legislature is fifty-four thirty-eight. What it does, basically. Would be to make the licensing process go through LARA. Which means the state wants their cut of the money. Which is what it boils down to. I write through it. Basically, it says the townships and municipalities can regulate STRs. As commercial enterprises. And. And each locality. Can. Make its own regulations. According to what A is legal and B they see fit so. With that, we'll start, I believe we left off. That standards which was. Parking, I do have three colored. East Bay, Constance, Carter, Charlotte Boyd. And I believe this is. Milton. So we can kind of go through this and compare things and see if we're not adequately addressing each issue. Now, what we're starting with is parking. Six oh five standards. Now, there was a question about the. Minimum length in R one.
Sorry, Tom, before we move on to standards, we were rewriting the limitations.
Yeah.
Did that, I didn't get in your copy.
Yeah, it was sent out the email as an attachment, like within two days of last reading.
Even checked my email, I didn't get one from you.
Right, you said. I know. If you had my revised copy.
Just in the last shot of days you.
If we go back. Yeah.
We were just.
Yeah, you should have had one on.
No, I didn't get that. To be sure, I checked my email, I was looking for it in my email.
Limitations six oh one for the period beginning to the time prior to Memorial. Does it Tuesday, Friday?
Yes. If you're on Zoom, could you mute yourself? We can hear you.
In zone residential one only, the minimum rental length shall be seven days. Okay, there was a lot of discussion on that. And this was put in for that specific period. For that minimum. Rental length. Now. Looking at this, if somebody wants to. Rent a place for three days. And they sign a rental agreement for seven. They're legal, but they only want to stay one day, they could stay one day, if they want to stay five, they can stay five. But.
You mean they have to pay for seven days?
Yeah, they would have. They would have to pay for seven days. In other words.
That's without.
When somebody presents their calendar at the beginning of the year, their rentals. Between this period, every block that's rented should be for a minimum of seven days. Okay, from. Your Friday prior to Memorial Day to the Tuesday following Labor Day, you should see nothing but seven day rentals or more.
In the R one.
In the R one district.
Is that Crystal Beach Road?
What's that?
R one, is that Crystal Beach Road?
Ah, it's Crystal Beach Road.
How are they doing rentals if that's zone residential, that's what I want?
Well, the thing about it is. For those of you who've been here for the first time.
Well, I was in Florida.
Okay, our zoning ordinance operates on permitted uses. STRs are not a permitted use in any land use district. So we have to amend zoning ordinance twenty-two to allow short term rentals in all land use districts.
Why are we allowing that, it's residential, I don't understand that.
Why are we allowing it?
Yeah.
Because they exist, they have existed for decades. What we're doing, we cannot regulate them unless we recognize them. We have to legally recognize them in order to enforce any ordinance, that's what this is for. Okay?
What if we choose not to recognize?
What?
What if we choose not to recognize them?
Then basically, what you do is you'll end up in court. Because, well, because.
The township, the taxpayers' money.
Yeah, right.
Yes, yeah, the Michigan Supreme Court has read and recognized short term rentals as commercial enterprises. Commercial enterprises are not allowed in residential business. Unless you're living there. If you're living there and it's a family owned and operated business. And you are physically on that property. Then you can run. Whatever, bed, dress, whatever.
Are you saying the owner has to be on the property to run, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Then how are they running out, you can say?
The owner. Okay.
It's never been addressed, it's never been regulated.
Short term, that is, to make it legal under the zoning ordinance currently. Okay, the owner has to be on the property.
Well, they're not.
Okay, now. The short term rental definition is anything rented for less than thirty days. Okay, not permitted in any land use district right now. Okay, so what we're going to do is recognize the fact that short term rentals do exist. Okay?
Have they voted, does people want them, you don't want them?
No, there will be a public hearing after we go through this.
Oh.
Okay, and the board will either approve the draft and the amendment. To zoning ordinance twenty-two. Okay, to make. STRs legal and then with this ordinance, regulate them and license them.
Now, I have a question, do any of you people live in an area where you're affected by these short term rentals?
I do.
I don't.
Anybody else? So why don't you have some people from the communities that are affected by those on this. On this board to discuss.
On their board.
Well, I mean, there should be people that are affected by it, not people that don't even look close to it.
This is basically a legal ordinance that becomes law once we pass it.
This is years of discussion. So there have been people on both sides that have been here and presented their arguments.
So does it come down to a vote of them or?
It'll be a vote of the board. Okay, the public hearing gives everybody a chance to argue for or against. Okay, what we're trying to do is. Basically stop the creep.
Stop the what?
The creep. Okay, well, I've had, I had. I had two phone calls. Friday, actually Monday, from real estate agents looking to buy property at Crystal Beach Road.
Oh, yeah.
The express purpose of renting it out.
That's why we need to stop them.
Okay, what we're trying to do is cap the number of short term rentals. Meaning if you put in an application here, and the way I explained it to the real estate agent. Between October first, if we get this on schedule. And January first, twenty twenty-five, you will be approved, providing you meet the requirements in this ordinance. Okay, so we will approve everyone. Okay, and then cap that number.
So how many are there right now?
I have no idea, over a hundred. Over a hundred.
Right, I would like to just show you this. This is one of the, right on Crystal Beach Road, seven cars, one car per.
We understand that, we're trying to address this, if you would give us the opportunity to go through this. I know I haven't seen you here before.
I've been here before, but not in the last six months because I was.
Right, right, and I can tell because the chairs I put out were obviously not adequate. Okay, so anyway. Let's get on with this. So limitations in R one. Basically for the seven day minimum, and they only apply in R one, and they only apply through these days, summer season. Okay, this was basically. To keep the three day weekend warriors, you know, the frat parties and people out here that like to make noise at three thirty in the morning.
Well, what do you think these rentals do?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, the seven day minimum, I mean, you know, right now, we rent, you know, we just rent in the month of July, and we do five to seven. And it makes a big difference if you allow somebody to say five versus seven. And so I'm just curious, and the same, I mean, if I do seven day rentals, these go kind of rents are there all the time. Whether or not they're for five days and they're two days off, or there's seven days and there are people there, it's more difficult for me to rent it at seven.
Basically, for the purpose of this, what we were looking at is, you know, the two and three day renters. Coming here, you know, to. Basically use the sandbar and party until hours, all hours in the morning. We do have, we do have a noise ordinance, we can enforce.
Right.
The problem is, is if we stipulate a seven day minimum, that basically keeps. Not only the owner or the owner's agent. But the renter aware that he's going to have to pay the freight for seven days, whether he stays there for one. Two, six, or the full seven.
Well, yes, I'm very curious to that, I understand the three day, we're doing the holidays, but between three and seven, there's a lot more numbers. I mean, five, there're not going to be a lot of frat parties coming up with five days, or six, or seven. And there's a lot more flexibility for renters and for, you know, the people who are renting. At five, six, or seven, then there's the seven. Because even if you, for example, if you just go on VRPO and you say, I want a seven day rental, probably what you have to do is have to be, what day does it start, what day does it end? So Saturday, 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 well, a lot of people don't want it Saturday, Saturday, someone will go Sunday to Saturday, someone will go Friday till Friday, I mean. And that gets all messed up if you put a hard stop at seven days, so it means renting much more.
And how the hell are you even going to know, is somebody going to go around there and see how many days they've been there, doesn't he mix that up?
Yeah, I understand having a minimum, but it seems like seven is a high minimum. I mean, five days is, you know, and I can be bought for five days and are going to be partying like crazy.
Who's hand went up first here?
I think I did, I guess my questions are too bold, one. What evidence do you have that even supports that it's three day frat boys that are even, the one front name? Second of all, how do you even know that there are any renters that are going to the sandbar when they see boats and all kinds of people from all over going there? So what evidence do you have to support that theory, that it has to be a seven day?
Yeah, when we get to it, down to enforcement, okay, we will, basically creating the position of code enforcement office. Okay, which will work.
I guess what you wanted to do, my question is how do you know that now?
I know it.
I know.
We lit it.
You live next door to them.
We lit it.
Two ancillars and frat parties are absolutely.
And it's all the four rounds, three days.
There's the problem. Problem is protecting the community as we've known it, and I've only been here twenty-eight years. Okay, but some of these people are legacy owners that have this property, these properties have been passed on from generation to generation for four or five generations. Okay, and having a frat party next door all summer long. Is not respecting the neighborhood or the community.
I appreciate that, but.
What you're trying to do.
Enforcement that can take care of that.
Right, that dips our whole enforcement office. Calm down, oh, it's your turn, you gotta go get a civil lawsuit, you gotta neighbor's or father. All right, it's a civil suit. Seriously, that's what the cops are telling you, okay, civil suit.
Um, for the sake of some context for some people that are here, I. I'm one of the folks that have had property for years, historically. Where I have property has been cottages and rentals and resort area, historically. Myself and several others were some of the proponents of a minimum rental. I personally have always strictly rented only seven days to keep out the. The youngers crowd, what you might say, this budget crowd. I specifically do families only and only want to rent to the people that have. You know, they're an older generation, they have kids and grandkids, they're very respectful. They're having family gathering and it's the one time a year they can get together and they enjoy it.
And they support the community.
Well, to this gentleman's comment, you know, I had said several meetings ago that. I prefer to rent for seven days. Three days is, I believe, also very good. Five days probably will still restrict that crowd. And in my experience, I do know that sometimes families have an alternating agenda whether they can arrive on. It's Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and these are the good families, the, you know, the grandparents, and the, everybody's got schedule, I've got football, this kid's doing this, this kid's doing that. So while three days is probably a poor idea for sure, seven days could possibly be. Obviously the best control, but five days might be effective for that same reason.
Basically, what you're saying, what you're saying is we reduce this minimum to five days during this period, it gives you flexibility for scheduling purposes.
For some of those good families, you want those good families.
I know, I understand that, I won't, you know, if we're going to correct it, we'll correct it now.
Yes, sir, I would refer to this, one of the two other gentlemen, that I think five days is reasonable for consideration of the group today.
Yes, sir.
I think that some of these should stay, and it's up to the owner or the vendor to decide whether or not they reduce their rent. That they, knowing that they're only going to be there for five, that's on them. Because in the case of an ordinance, in the case of enforcement, you need to have standards. And you're bending to the, you're bending to the renters, and we've already established right now, that's a D. So we're bending to do this, I think that's.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is.
So let's keep it aside, let's see how it goes, and it needs to be amended backward, but protect the rights of everyone else and protect the community, because that's your first responsibility.
Yes, Jim.
Yeah, if you reworded that a little bit differently, you could just limit it to. One. Rental period for seven days.
The group with the minimum of five days.
Oh, so nobody can come in for those.
Yes, exactly. You have a seven day rental period where you can't have more than one rental customer.
Why can't that, why can't it be rented like, so there can only be a rental every. Like every so many feet, I mean, it's just ridiculous down there by the verge of Crystal Beach Road.
I mapped that out. Okay, the thousand foot rule, Mr. Packer. Okay, that means on Crystal Beach Road loan, you would be allowing ten STRs. I know there are more than ten STRs.
Yeah, but something's definitely done about it because.
Okay, so that, that idea was thrown out. Okay, basically what we're going to do, what we're trying to do here. Is legalize the STRs so that we can set some rules and regulations, hold the owners and the renters responsible for their actions. Okay, and enforce it.
Ow, oh, yeah. Yeah, how do you enforce that, who's coming out?
Code enforcement officers, he has a problem, we either go to court. Or we have a problem with the renter, we have our own deputy now. Okay, the code enforcement officer is a witness to a violation of either misconduct. Or any other law, trespassing, theft, vandalism, et cetera, we will arrest the renter.
Is it a hell cast county deputy?
Hell cast county deputy is under contract at Clearwater Township.
But by doing.
Under contract to enforce our ordinance.
You don't go into detail, what are some of the situations that you've looked at around the country? And where we own property on Crystal Beach Road, spent our summers here, we also own, we, our full time residency is out in Pars City, Utah. They're very, very controlled and very regulated, Pars City, Lake Tahoe. You know, some of the areas, I know like Charlotte Boyd is, I, you know, we're second generation owners. What have you studied, what have you looked at, I don't know the township has the ordinance, I know Charlotte Boyd does.
No, I've got some of Charlotte Boyd's ordinance right here, East Bay, Milton Township.
Well, Milton Township, doesn't they shut down the short term rentals?
They have a limit, they have a cap.
That's what we need to do.
They can't do that, they can't. One of the, one of the issues here, and I will read it. Okay, a local unit of government. This is in the House bill and in the legislature right now, shall not enact or enforce any ordinance, rule, regulation, including but not limited to. A zoning ordinance rule. Regulation that has the effect of totally banning or inhibiting short term rentals.
Well, then how did they do what they've done? They don't have short term rentals.
Yeah, they'll be in court.
Mr. Supervisor, we're getting lower, we're not getting any.
I gotta respond to what you just read. What, that is, I gotta respond to what you just read, that bill is through the legislature, it's not passed yet.
Yeah, I understand that.
But at the appellate court of the state of Michigan, when the community has not wanted. Short term rentals, they have cited for that decision every time from two thousand and four till just this past year, almost twenty years of deciding, again, if the community didn't want it. So that's going to have a problem.
All right, let me get hypothetical, we ban short term rentals. We go after each and every one of them.
Yep.
Period.
Yep, right, that's what we have.
This is allowed, it should be enforced, I agree with some of this.
What we're trying to do is regulate conduct and behavior. We had people complain of firewood being stolen. Okay. Paddle boards and kayaks being taken off of docks and used and just left wherever. You know, people breaking into, you know, vacant homes out there, yes, sir.
Mr. Supervisor, House Bill five four three eight does state that you cannot totally ban short term rentals, it does not state. That you cannot limit the amount of time a short term rental can be used in any particular district.
Right.
So you can, so no township is justified in the six week limit because of that they're not banning it, but they are restricting it in R one. And that's what we need to do.
Like I said, we have people that use STRs during color season, deer hunting, the holidays, et cetera, et cetera. But this is the best we could come up with for the summer season.
Why don't we do what Milton Township did, that looks like that worked good.
Yes.
Okay, you.
I thought at one time you had it where it was ten percent of the population on Clearwater, that you would only issue two hundred licenses and that's it. That's without you restricting it.
And how do you figure that out?
You know how many people pay property, you have own property in Clearwater now.
Basically, there are, well, about twenty-five hundred.
Okay, and you get ten percent of that and be two hundred and fifty licenses and that's the max. And then there's a list of people watching because, and you said the real estate is going crazy because they're buying all these houses.
I understand that, because I got two phone calls last week.
Yeah.
Okay, here's, here's the deal, we add over roughly a hundred or so right now, if we issue everybody a license, we could cap that number right there.
We're waiting.
We create a waiting list.
But then we still are left with the mess we have now, so what would it say?
Public forum, we're not going to get through this.
Just very quickly, I want to say stolen kayaks and firewood and trespassing are all law enforcement things.
Right, and they have to have witnesses or be a witness to the crime. Okay, that's what the code enforcement officer, all right, let's move on, but now, do we change? The limitation from seven to five days?
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
That's enough.
It's pretty equally split.
I say we can be from, do a mountain mountain.
All right. Side of my pole, all right, no, no, no?
I said, yeah.
Are we going to monitor that?
Right.
I mean, we can make these, if we can't monitor them, we're just like.
Yeah.
Seven day limitation stamp, move on, park.
Okay. Basically. One of the problems created by short term rentals. Not to mention overcapacity for the septic systems. Is the number of cars involved.
Did you rewrite the parking or not, because according to the attorney, this provision may very well be unenforceable. And prohibiting renters from using a road in such a way that everyone else is free to use may be found invalid under the reasonableness test.
Now, we're dealing with basically a short term rental only, now. Public roads, you can park. Okay, what we want to do is come up with something. Between the maximum capacity per bedrooms supported by the septic system. And the number of cars that that maximum capacity entails. Is to put something in the standards that basically says. Your clients, your rentals will park on that property. Period. Okay, instead of going across Crystal Beach Road and using porch cord for a public parking lot. Or Crystal Beach Road for a public parking lot.
Do those roads have no parking signs, is there an ordinance for no parking on those roads?
Some in some place.
That's, that's the county. And if.
If there are, if the public is allowed to park there, then we can.
I've been through that, it's, John Rogers was trying to get one side of. The. Torch. Arleth Trail.
Point with statement, just I would highly encourage you group to avoid regulating parking and septic unless you're going to do that for every home consistently. Just regulating short term rentals, you're putting yourselves in a rescue, I'm telling you right now, that's a line you don't want to cross. I understand the intent, but regulating it, all of this are fine with regulating the industry, good with that, but now you're stepping into a very, very. Tenuous area, if you're going to mine either next door, and have ten cars in their driveway because they're having a party, and I can only have five of my renters, that's an issue. Just be careful.
I guess I was, I was going to ask that question, I, I know you said that you've got the deputy that is getting contracted. How, like, there was kind, I kind of wanted to know that, because sometimes it seems like there, it's not rentals as much as sometimes just families doing their thing. And it's, oh, but is that, are they enforcing for them too, is it just a short term rentals, I guess I was just curious. Right, but I, but I think you have.
Sir, if I point, this is a commercial business, recognized by the state of Michigan, okay? If you were running a restaurant. Okay, and the health inspector decided to close your kitchen or your restrooms simply because your septic system was either outdated. Inadequate or broken.
Which they regulate everyone, everyone as a whole, I think. You don't want to restrict it just to short term rentals.
I'm saying this is a commercial enterprise, this is different from regulating, you know, John Doe next door.
I mean, I just, I think.
Well, it's still got to go through legal anyway.
Health department regulates that anyways. Health department regulates that anyways.
How can we help with the short-term renting on a ballot in both?
Because we'll never get anything at that point.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't have, that's why. There wouldn't be any short-term rentals.
All right, um, so what do we do? What did the lawyer say about the...
Uh, the lawyer said, both from a legal standpoint and even practically excluding a certain class of persons from using a public roadway for parking based solely on their renting of a dwelling could very well draw legal challenges.
Oh.
So you cannot regulate that, it's unenforceable.
Yeah, well, it's straight, it's straight.
You can say that they have to have parking available, but you can't say that they can't park on the street.
I have a question. Over that parking, just in general in the township, um, am I lucky to just have a boat trailer or whatever and just park on the side of the road for five nights and not have any consequence for that? Just abandon my car for five minutes and I get the orange head?
It's a line. Well, this is...
Because honestly, that applies to us as private, as, as occupied residents as much as we're around. The nature of my, uh, uh, event that I might have with family gatherings is maybe limited in twice a summer. In the case of a commercial rental, they're doing this twelve weeks through the summer or more.
But it's not all short-term rentals.
People that are parking there, it's our responsibility.
Those cars are on the side of the road all summer long, I know that. That's a big difference.
That's what we're trying to address here at the...
My experience is on Arwood Trail, and because of the boat launch that's there, the car and the trailer has to be completely off the road. And then they can park there on my property or on my neighbor's property. Get one little bit of their tire from a mere standing out into the road, they're ticketed right there. The, the, uh, sheriffs are right there to do that. So right now, they can park. And to this gentleman that said back here, ten people parking my driveway, that's my driveway. I could have ten people park my driveway. Anyone can. And to your point, this is a commercial business now versus a...
If you can't put them in the driveway.
Yeah. My, I know when I bought my house, my septic system was inspected. It had to be inspected. That's across the board with everybody, and I'm just residential. So we're okay with the septic. There might be some questions about the parking. Uh, we still can't have ten cars parked all over the place legally. That's, to me, that's nuts.
Wh-what if you simply establish that the property has to have adequate parking for the number of vehicles within the property license of the, the, within the occupancy or so?
Within the property. Right.
But that's the first line. No less than one parking space per two legally conforming bedrooms or studio apartment shall be provided for overnight parking by short-term renters. So they do have to make sure that there's parking space available.
Right.
But it's, it's by bedrooms?
Right.
Yeah, I have one good question. I keep, I keep hearing about the commercial enterprises, the commercial licensing. Now, my question is, while we talk about residential properties, while we talk about commercial properties, you're talking about a commercial, commercial law. There's a whole different building standard for commercial than it is for residential.
Right.
Now, we have to have engineered drawings for everything for commercial, like you guys did do when you abandoned, laying down a trail, put the esprits down, a two-track with a car. You guys broke the law completely without any consideration of the neighbors. You should have engineered a drawing anytime you get onto a commercial, a commercial project. Now, now, I don't see what we're talking about. And we wondered if you talked about residential houses, now then you talk about commercial. So which, which one is, we use, we're gonna use residential or we use commercial, commercial law?
Basically, this...
Well, the first activity requires control of commercial, showing, commercial license.
That's a good question, really. I mean...
This, this is, this is addressing basically a residential unit being used for commercial purposes.
Well, how many people have commercial license out here that are actually, you know, ready? Probably nobody, right? It's all about the money, right?
No, what kind of taxes are they paying? Are they paying like primary owner taxes or they paying second home taxes when they're running?
A lot of them are paying second home taxes and...
Well, they all should be.
Must pay just taxes.
Unless you're living on that property and, and you claim it as you're a homestead, you're paying the freight.
So, uh, who's checking that?
The state of Michigan.
Yeah, state of Michigan and the sheriff and the assessor. Okay? But, you know, to get back to this, as far as it's enforcing, the septic portion of this, we wanna make sure that your number of bedrooms is supported by, especially on Crystal Beach and Hoyle's and, uh, Arwood Trail, that your septic system can handle the people you're renting to all summer long. Because they come up here for the water.
Right. Okay.
Water license.
That's the whole...
Water sandbar license. You wanna go to the sandbar, you gotta, you gotta get up here. But that would be the guy.
No. The other... Our, our authority stops the high water.
Yeah, the other something you made, you said you rent the whole summer. Us as an example, we only rent for five weeks, okay? So you're gonna place heavy regulation on us when we only rent our property for five weeks out of the... So you have to be careful that you're now applying something that assuming is memorial day delivered, that, that every single short-term rental will be rented during that boundary. Most of the room aren't not ready at, during that.
Are they, is that listed on the thing they fill out, like how many weeks they're renting for?
Basically, we would, part of the application process, if we ever get to it, okay, is for sometime before the thirty-first of March, okay? You have to provide a calendar for that summer. Okay, so that basically tells us who's renting, how long, uh, you know, and, and basically how many people are, we can expect to be at a particular residence. So if there is...
That's gonna be pretty difficult.
Yeah, they, they, they go our... 'Cause I guess, I got one open, that three days ago, in the, coming into July, I mean, this would be a...
So it's...
You know, we're just, I mean, I have it, it's going to available. If there's an update to your calendar, then you just, you just email it, uh, the zoning administrator, and he just fills it in. So, I mean, it's not, it's something that's gonna be monitored.
So how much are these licenses for these short-term rentals?
We need to stick to the agenda, uh, you guys, I love that you have so much input and everybody has something to say, but we have not gone through one section yet. That's why. We've been here for almost an hour.
First, the first sentence is a statement on parking.
Yes, and the rest of it has to go away.
Okay, and the rest of it gives us an illegal trial unless we can get the county uh, to enforce, uh, no parking on one side of Crystal Beach, Arwood Trail, et cetera, et cetera. And I tried that once, um, except John Rogers, I think we have to pass separate ordinance on local roads. But as far as Crystal Beach...
Something for our, our committee to look at.
Okay.
Add that to your list.
Well, it's a, even word, I'm just kidding, it's a word, everything they're going through right now for those short-term rentals? I mean, does it work, like money-wise, monetarily-wise for the township?
Well, we're, yes, the application fee is three hundred bucks.
That's it.
What's it gonna cost for the deputy and all that? You're, you're not gonna make any money, you're losing money.
Uh, the cost for the deputy is about forty-five grand a year.
Right, so, so now we have a deputy, we're only making three hundred dollars...
Okay, we're, we're off topic again. Uh, the cost for the application, the application is three hundred dollars. For the license, it's five hundred dollars a year added tonight. Okay, that, according to, if I use a hundred, uh, a hundred STRs, is eighty grand to support enforcement.
Okay, half of what's...
The code enforcement officer and...
The deputy is not...
No, all the taxpayers that don't wanna are helping pay for it. That's the deal. Basically.
No, the STRs are paying for their own enforcement.
Yeah.
Unless you would probably, if you get any arrests and charges, any fees would be probably implemented to that house too. So let's say you, the deputy arrests somebody for sailing a kayak and they get charged with, um, rent or something.
They're already paying one of those tariffs.
Right, so what I'm saying, so you're, you're kinda recouping that too.
But our additional...
Right, I was, I was just saying in addition to...
Our additional money is specifically for our deputy to enforce our ordinance. Okay, and the STR ordinance will be paying for that enforcement, both through the court enforcement officers and basically they're picking up part of the tab for the deputy.
Right, we have that, when that cost come out of...
Let's, let's move on.
Sure, I'll go back to the county. The county just did, like the sheriff?
Yeah.
Got them both. That money, we go back to the county.
Okay, parking space, what?
So is one parking space per two bedrooms, is that adequate?
It should be. But there were seven upside, seven pairs upside.
It says no less than.
No less than, yeah. Okay, you're right.
Okay, what we're trying to do is get people to think about if you're...
Make sure you have parking.
Now, parking space, as, as, this is a definition, number two. Should probably move that, did I put it in definitions?
I don't have that in my...
Bedroom, rolling unit.
I have one at like...
So I was looking at that, just...
What is that?
Short-term rentals, no, this is good. Okay, so we should move, uh, number two.
I don't even have number two, where's that? It's not on mine at all.
Okay, I've got two tracks, that was changed at our last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because number two was track.
Yeah.
And I inserted that, and it should go into definitions.
Okay.
Because we defined...
And we didn't have parking space defined?
But they have, parking space is defined as one unit of area provided for the safe parking of one motor vehicle within the property lines of a property and not over a septic field.
We do have parking spaces and other things. It's alphabetized.
Is that verbatim what I had there?
I didn't, I, I just found it, I didn't even... That's the problem, we have too many versions.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to... Okay, so you've got that, and that's an older...
It was...
Okay.
It was, uh, well, I don't know what day.
All right, so anyway, they'll get moved to definitions, then we change the number down low. Crash. So is that definitions specifically enough?
No, I don't have...
One unit area provided for the safe parking of one motor vehicle within the property lines of a property and not over a septic field.
And how are you gonna monitor, how are you gonna monitor that? There might be guests pulling in to visit for the day, not staying overnight, or when they have an officer going by every night telling you...
They can park on the street again.
We just, how do, we can, it wasn't, you have to know...
Thing about it is, is what, what's gonna happen is, is once this ordinance is forth, if someone complains...
Well, that would be up to the property owner or caretaker to mark the clear area where they should park and where they should not park.
Right.
Well, I'm saying, as some could just be guests for the day, not overnight.
Well, I understand that. They can also park on the roadway until we figure out what to do with the road. And that's basically the count.
Yes, sir. May I address your point? You know, I think a lot of this stuff, with, with a certain number of rentals, will be difficult to enforce to the letter of the law. However, some of these guidelines, I think what we're all agreeing is that i-if we are going to allow a high standard of people to come into our community and use our community, then we wanna have a guide on what's acceptable and not acceptable. So if you have these guidelines posted and you're sending them to the renters and you're telling them, it will deter some of the...
Bad behavior.
Bad behavior. The people that might look at that property and say, oh, well, we'll get in trouble, we'll get a fine, we'll get a penalty, we can't use that property with too many people because it's only three bedrooms or two bedrooms or whatever it is, and they'll, they'll move to what's correct for them.
Okay, this, this is basically trying to set some standards for conduct, not only by the owners of the property as to who they rent to, okay, but to the conduct of the renters themselves. All right, and like, I, I had a phone call from Deputy Creighton two days ago over an issue, noise complaints, all right? And what I told him was, I said, the first time you show up, if, if you're requested to show up, I said, you be nice. I said, the second time, you be nice but be firm. I said, the third time is the time not to be nice. Okay, so, uh, you know, we're not trying to provoke a fight here. What we're trying to do is make people aware, uh, that there are people living in this community year-round, okay, who have been living there forever, and they don't like what they see changing. And it's not just affecting the conduct in the, in the communities, it's affecting our task base. Okay, last year, the property values of Clearwater Township went up thirty percent. Everybody pays that freight.
But, you guys, you guys say that, but have you bought a house anywhere called Casco Man's House Properties in...
It is, sir.
And then up thirty-six.
It's old.
It's whatever, whatever, it's crazy.
Right, but I can show you specific examples where, uh, LLCs and real estate agents have paid three times the, uh, appraised value of properties on Crystal Beach Road. I can give you three examples in, in five minutes.
In one right now.
Okay.
Because that, that, I'll put a piece of septic, right? I mean, they're getting three times more, you're getting three times more real estate tax on it.
Right, right. Yeah, but they're registered as LLCs, I mean, these people are Airbnbers, they're...
So it's definitely a baseline of respect. It's all about respect.
Right.
They say it's a baseline of respect, and that's to agree whether it's enforceable or not, that's what we're trying to do is...
We can't find out until we pass this, so we need to move on.
Yeah.
Okay. We have to have something in writing so that we can find out what works, what doesn't, and the next board can amend it as required.
Could you reread aloud the, the definition of parking, just a little quick, let's...
The definition of parking is one unit of area provided for the safe parking of one motor vehicle, motor vehicle, not a boat, motor, trailer, jet skis, you know, four-wheel drive ve- uh, off-road vehicle within the property lines of a property and not over a septic field.
And there's no mention of grass or...
No, you can park on the lawn, just don't make sure it's not over your septic, your drain field. Okay, uh, trash.
It's not the same definition as, I mean, ordinance twenty-two.
Yeah, that's where the motor just came from, Flanders. Uh, they're original, and I just, we're just going through it, updating that.
I think for, for that purpose, we should state in there that that is part of zoning ordinance twenty-two, because that is a zoning regulation ordinance already being...
So you want the reference?
Yeah. It's, uh, ordinance twenty-two, section eleven point oh-one.
Okay, so include the reference on that. Trash. Refugees are recycled, shall be stored in appropriate containers. That's another complaint by most of the neighbors. Uh, with tight-fitting lids and shall be regularly picked up by a licensed waste hauler weekly or taken into an inappropriate disposed disposal location. Anybody got a problem with that?
The attorney suggested you say secure lids instead of tight-fitting.
Okay.
Difficult to regulate, uh, tight-fitting. Because what's tight-fitting to me may not be tight-fitting to you.
I don't know where I...
Do you love them red bags? I, you may wanna just consider that.
No.
Putting red bags out.
Spread it all over the place. Okay, all right. You and the raccoons love that. Yeah.
I don't love it, trust me. I don't like it.
Let's, let's, let's keep it... Let's, let's, let's keep it orderly.
Now, we had a situation, um, just recently, in the last couple of weeks, um, at the end of Light Street near Crystal Beach Road, where there was a, there was a rental and they left on Saturday, I believe it was, and there was two trash containers. They were overstuffed, the lids were sliding in there, but there, there wasn't anything sitting outside the trash container, but those trash containers sat there here along Crystal Beach Road on Saturday until it was picked up Wednesday. Something we knew about that, so not driving by trash.
Similar situations, many of the rentals allow the trash tools to sit on the road all week long, and they have their renters take the bags out and put them in there. So we drive by the trash can every single day, no one puts them back at the property. They're just sitting on the road. That's very insightful, ladies, not good for.
Trash comes up there for days after days.
If you're gonna go, I can't blame you, but that happened in Old Township, nothing to do with running around like that.
I agree, well.
My neighbor puts this out there all the time.
We're, 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 we're putting this at the end of the street all the time. We're dealing with standards for short term rentals at the after moment. Okay. So basically, be responsible for your trash. Now, the other thing is overstuffed trash cans and trash cans sitting up or, you know.
Does it, yeah, we'll still get into it.
Um, gentlemen, guys, gotta. That can be addressed by, by basically the code enforcement officer. Okay, just say, hey, you need to, you need to do something with this trash, even for now.
And are you moving?
But this just strikes what we expect out of a rentalier. Okay, instead of, you know, uh, trash bags sitting out on the side of the road.
Well, the zoning officer can't go to somebody's house and say, hey, get your damn trash can off the side of the road. And there's nothing, what's, what's a government?
No, what he's talking about is, um, basically, uh, the trash containers were not adequate for the amount of trash.
Yes.
Okay, so.
But they're also saying they're leaving their trash cans out there, whether they're overflowing or not, they're just sitting out there.
Right. Excuse me.
We, I don't think we can regulate that.
But, but a blade could be made, right?
Blade or.
If somebody else or would have.
Is that garbage man blade?
Well, maybe. You send the zoning officer or code enforcement officer out there and say, hey, this trash is unacceptable, we'll do something.
Is there any kind of a thing like where they have so many complaints?
Yes, we're, we're getting to that, we're getting to that under violation, yes.
No, just so everybody's aware, that, I, I experienced a particular problem, was able to solve it, and there are several others in the community that utilize a service who is very dependable, who will come by every couple of days and move that trash. The, the, the regular trash service that is, uh, what you sign up for with the GFL or whoever it may be, only comes, I think, on Friday, right? So, to this factor's, um, point, if it sits there, it's a problem, it's a nuisance. So several of us have found, uh, a gentleman that comes and picks up your trash, he'll go by a couple of times a week if you ask, you pay for it. It costs you money, but it's the right thing to do.
Hey, who do you see? What's the name?
Quality Waste. Quality Waste.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, and he's very dependable, I mean, he's.
So that would, that would go into the renters, renters guidelines.
Yeah.
Or, and the owners.
Yeah, we weren't having.
That's the way we manage it, is in the rental agreement, our renters should take the trash out and bring it back, and if they don't, we buy it.
Right.
We get renters across the street from us that trash, they leave on on Sunday and it sits there for, till whenever the GFL comes there. And it's, it's, it's isolated.
We'll figure out a way to deal with that, but, but basically what we want is, is the owners and the renters to know that they need to be responsible for the trash and disposal. And, uh, basically any problems to be sorted out with. If there's an issue with the trash, the zoning administrator or the code enforcement officer, we thought, make the renters and the owner aware of it and give them an alternative basically to do, uh, uh, something, but if it's a re, if it's a repeated problem, okay, if, then it's in here, uh, we can, we can basically, uh, write a violation and you get three of those and your license is toast.
Isn't that already covered, covered under your new current light ordinance? That you were passing?
Uh, wouldn't be like, it wouldn't be like weekly trash or nothing like that.
Okay, and it might have been, maybe, like, or that, like, the Freedom Park down here, the doghouse, the concrete paint all over.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be something, yeah.
You've been, you've been warned.
That, that was, that.
Top of the hill, you.
That, that ordinance is basically designed for people like.
Like the town, like the township.
And, and getting our perpetual garage sale over here on Valley Road to clean up the sack.
What about the township, what about the township down here? You guys gotta address this, I, I, this has got to do with regulations.
It'd be Monday or Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday.
It's been there for two months. But then that's a regulation problem. That's, that's stating you guys were not able to enforce, enforce regulation upon yourself, your own problem. This is your, this is your problem with the doghouse, and you broke your own laws.
I don't, we, we understand that, it's gonna get addressed this week.
Thank you for bringing that up though.
Okay, so moving on, capacity limit. Uh, this one, this one's gonna be a step. An excellent number of short term rental occupants shall be the lesser of two per legally conforming bedroom. The septic system is designed to accommodate.
I mean.
Because if you go look up the health permit, it will tell you that exactly what was put in the ground. All right, and the number of bedrooms, okay, that it will support, that's the public health part.
So if there's a fifty foot lot, a two bedroom place, and there's seven cars outside for the whole weekend, you would kind of assume it's probably.
Uh, I understand that, but that gives us the opportunity to regulate the number of bedrooms that can be rented, uh, in an STR, so you can only use it. There is, uh, a house out there with a four car garage on it that put a, that the owner put a second story on and turned it into a dormitory.
The house behind me is, is a three bedroom house, they took the garage, put bunk beds in there. Now they can rent out sixteen people, I would say thirty people.
You can use, uh, you can use an accessory building or a guest house, S and STR must be operated separately. As, in other words, you need a license for that to.
How about a four bedroom that has double bunk beds in the bedrooms?
Well, a double.
How do you regulate that? It's thirty people, twenty people in that.
I understand that. If, if the number of bedrooms supported by the septic system says you can have five bedrooms, okay, and a bedroom is determined in the definitions here, okay, then if you rent more bedrooms than are supported by this septic system, you're in violation of this ordinance.
When does the public time, when does the public key for the public townhouse now? That we're at the wrong.
Not until, not until.
Once they get finished with this.
And it, and it comes back from legal, right? You have to go to legal before the public town.
Right, okay.
So you, you have the maximum number of short term rental occupants shall be what? Cause yours has changed for mine, and also the attorney has a recommendation on that as well.
The maximum number of short term rental occupants shall be the lesser of two per legally conforming bedrooms. Okay. And that the septic system is designed to accommodate plus a total of two additional occupants, so you can put four people in a bedroom.
Okay. So your two additional occupants need to be persons under the age of eighteen, right?
No.
So, or you're allowing four per bedroom.
Right, here, basically, the way this is written, it's four per bedroom. We're saying.
No, 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 that's not the way this is written, in my opinion. It's written two per bedroom plus in addition to not the bedroom in the house during the structure.
Yes. Okay.
So if you have, if you have. So I have an example here, three, three bedrooms.
Right.
Two per bedroom, that's six, plus you gotta pull out couch.
Right.
Two more.
Right.
That's eight, total.
That's the way.
That's the way it's written.
So you have two adults, five kids, you're good. If you have two adults, you have seven kids, you can't stay there.
Well, nobody's checking ID.
Who's enforcing that?
So, it's the language that I've got here.
I, I don't know, that's what.
Pretty much only calculations, so the back is to. You wanna put an aid restriction on the house, that's below your measure?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that doesn't apply to kids, that's basically anybody.
Two people over the age of eighteen. And then, um, guests, two guests over the age of eighteen, but under the age of eighteen, don't count those that pass through.
Who owns that home?
Yeah, but that will account to the septic that's there.
That, that.
Yeah, it still has to conform to the septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, your septic system, and, and there's a little problem with that, where you guys think about that a little bit more. First of all, on commercial property, you have to do well testing, you have to make sure that water's safe, of course, well. So then, there, there again, we, we have a big difference between commercial and residential. Now, we're talking about permits that you get at the county, you just talk about, you get the permit out and see what's followed by order. I'm gonna use an example, uh, Charlie Farrell's house, you, you were quite willing with that town. He sold his house. We just looked at that whole situation and, and they got an estimate for seventeen thousand five hundred for advanced septic system before he sold it. The system is adequate, has a two inch well. It's not, it's, it's with, it's not within current code, but yes, his grandfather did, so you can use that system, and it's good for a two bedroom house. However, you know, with twenty five people, and they're, this summer, I guess, with new people, and, and we, we went pretty small. But there, there's, again, we have a situation where we have commercial and residential. And I don't know how we can regulate a septic system or any of this.
I, I agree, cause honestly, if you had, unless you're eighteen kids and counting, you're not gonna have eighteen people in your house every single day um, to tax your system like that. So, and there is no way to regulate it. I mean, people are advertising these properties as.
Well, how many twelve people, fourteen? How many houses here are registered as commercial?
Well, they, they all, they all get licensed from the, you guys, every one people will be on commercial property.
But right now, nobody is, right?
I know, but if you get licensed, this, this licensing is, I don't think it's a good idea, I think you should copy custom township where they eliminate sort of completely. And that's, that seems to work out really well, they don't have the problems that we have. But that would be a better, better.
What township?
Custom township.
No zone.
There's no, there hasn't been any zone there. But that, that's just the wrong corner, it's not even has to lean, you know, or custom township.
It's that, there's no, there's no water.
Lake Woods Road, all that stuff, there's no zone there. Eliminated a lot of problems, let people be free, what we, what we're gonna do with the three. Are we gonna regulate something? You can't even get a hold of the health department. We're gonna have, we have to have our own health cop here too.
Oh, no, I, I, I just, I understand.
They've been out before, we, I guess, he does.
The paperwork, the paperwork should be on file from the original.
Some, it, it, it is, it, it is not, actually, a lot of these places, some of them have, uh, you know, a system might show one thing, it might be something totally different, and, but they, they might not, and it might not be on file.
So we, we get a licensed contractor to go out and basically
certify.
Dig up the information if you can, and if not, write out what, what that system is capable of supporting. And once that system is basically inspected and certified along with the well, okay, then that information will be used to determine the number of bedrooms it supports, which gets us back to the capacity limit of that STR.
Guys, you, you, you don't wanna limit children. You, you wanna, you wanna be careful on how you do that, because then you're, then you're just pushing the families that are good away.
That you're living for, you want the family.
People that will come here are the people that we don't want. It's, it's the family that we want, usually sandwiches, like, we, we usually, two or three generations, just family. Everyone, if the grandparents, the parents and the kids, it's the perfect, most respectful situational.
Right, I understand.
All right, can I read this? Uh, what the attorney had recommended for this is the maximum number of renters in a dwelling shall be equal to two persons over the age of eighteen per legally conforming bedroom or studio apartment. Persons under the age of eighteen accompanied by a parent or guardian do not count for the capacity limit. And additionally, the capacity limit may be reduced as required by a well and septic report provided by the county.
Okay, so, that takes care of minors.
Yeah, because you want, you want the people with the children.
No, no, I understand that, you don't want.
And then it also takes care of not overtaxing the septic.
Right, so. I've got his. So that language, you need to.
Understand it.
So red letter. Okay, so. Capacity limit. Okay, and you get rest of the. Okay, so. Now, gotta be twelve occupants total in here. Which would basically eliminate the five tenants.
Yeah. Because it's per, you know, occupant, or per house.
Okay, so we wanted to assert the legal security here. Okay, so that gets changed somewhat. With the maximum number of short term rentals in the dwelling shall be equal to two persons over the age of eighteen per legally conforming bedroom or studio apartment. Short term rentals in the dwelling, like, two guests over the age of eighteen for dwelling. Persons under the age of eighteen accompanied by a parent or guardian do not count for the capacity limit.
That's the same thing I just dropped.
Capacity limit may be reduced as required by a well and septic report provided by Chautauqua County Health Department or a third party regarding tank sizes and veterans. So that's what's going in here.
Isn't that a little contradictory when you're, you're, you're low on the subject number, but then you're coming back to the, to the limitation on septic? So where's, where's the limitation on the, you know, uh, if a septic system is designed to handle two people per bedroom, and as you're saying, as you're saying, well, there's gonna be two people bed, per bedroom plus two, plus anybody under the age of eighteen. You're gonna have many people in that, like.
Yeah. Ten year old. Really, it's probably, I should have been on the septic system.
Yeah.
No matter what.
And if the septic system is so outdated, because, let's face it, some of these were little cabins and cottages, okay, that were torn down to the foundation. And, but, and their place was, was basically a two or three million dollar home, four car garage. Okay, and advertised on B R B O or Airbnb as an STR with the existing. If the health department is not doing their job.
Are they not?
Which.
We gotta protect the lake and.
Okay, we're trying to protect the lake and the laundry. They didn't have, and they didn't have that septic system replaced because it was a two bedroom cottage, and now it's a five bedroom basically condo. Uh, and what we're trying to do is look out for the lake and the laundry, okay, so if the septic system is, can be proven to be inadequate for the existing structure or structures.
Then the capacity limit is reduced.
Then.
And that's what this says.
You either have, you either have to limit.
Capacity is determined by septic.
You want to move to the septic if you're on.
Occup, the septic determines occupancy period.
Period.
Period. One, one more coming in. We heard at the, at the last meeting, uh, short term rental meeting, of the, um, health department's willingness to accept a substandard size. Health department's willingness to accept a substandard sized drain field in. In lieu of a, of a holding tank system, so we know that they will take a substandard sized drain field. Simply because there isn't room on the property, so if I had two beds for my house, and I don't have room for. The additional drain field, they're willing to accept that. Because they don't put a, they don't put a number of people per bedroom, they only look at the number of beds. So whether you put two people in it, or four people in it, or six people in that bed, but they are willing to accept, as was stated here at the last meeting. That they're willing to accept substandard sized drain fields and little holding tanks.
So you have to have both. So you have to say both of them.
I'm saying it needs to be determined, you you need two ways, it needs to be determined, be determined by the size of the septic system.
And by.
In relation to the number of bedrooms, like you have here, you have two people per bedroom. Plus two, that allows for a couple of children right there, don't put an age, and that doesn't matter, could be kids, could be grandparents. Two per bedroom plus two, and a hard cap. Ten, twelve. Because it's easy, it's easy to add a couple of bedrooms, just partition off a couple of bedrooms. Uh I I do not wanna rent to the twenty girl without kids. But if you drive, my family's away, I have no choice. And then it's, you couldn't, it's not a good situation. We want, we don't wanna, so we're trying to give respect to the baseline and responsible. Uh uh visitors to our community, we want those people. If 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 I, if I can't rent a families, then what is my choice? And I have this, it's not like it's my job or anything like that, I do it to subsidize taxes. And I do it to subsidize my mortgage, so that I can use it the the forty-six weeks out of the year. Like during, you're not, you're not driving children away, I mean, you got two per bedroom plus two.
Really, twelve?
I mean, so, you know, I mean, so do you allow two parents in each bedroom plus all their kids to come? Cause that's what you're doing by going seven, under the age of eighteen, so I can, in a four bedroom house, I can have, I can have. Four sets of parents, that's eight people, plus two, that's ten, plus if those four. Sets of parents bring their two or three or four kids, how many people do I have in that room? So that's what you're setting up here.
Yes.
You you need, you need a limit based on the number of bedrooms, and beyond that, to prevent a situation like I just described. You need a hard cap, that's what that hard cap does, it puts a limit, a total limit on the number of people regardless of policy.
Now, you're saying a hard cap, basically.
You're gonna drive the families out of here, and you're gonna have nothing but bad. You're gonna, you're gonna let the families, let the grandparents, and they will walk, and they'll look at you, and they'll say, well. I guess that doesn't work, we'll go over there, and then, and then there's gonna, it's, it's supply and demand. There's people here that depend on the, the four to six to eight rentals just to subsidize the taxes. The taxes are incredible here, they're incredible.
Well, I also wanna point out that it's not the township's responsibility for you to subsidize anything. Nobody pays, we are responsible for our own taxes, we are responsible for our own property, right?
Yep.
So it's not the township's responsibility, we're going way above and beyond, my belief is there shouldn't be no charter. Right, period, done. But the township board has taken it up to try to appease a little bit of everybody. So just keep in mind, it's not the township's responsibility for you to make money off your property.
Amen.
Not, not big thing much, sir, when I bought this property, there was a discussion within these boards and these communities. About being a, 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 a practice thing over the last fifty years, and everybody understood that it was. And I I have documentation where it was discussed by members within this room and other committees. That it was an understand practice that people do this, and they've done it for, listen.
They've been in violation at the ordinance for that long.
This is in the sixties, in the seventies, in the fifties, in the forties.
Problem is, especially like, to your example, you're keeping the price so high, probably, I'm assuming. That no ordinary Joe is able to rent his property. He keeps it high, so he gets these higher people, right, older people, that not gonna cause problems, maybe respect a little bit more, right? But what I kept hearing before is, we want people to enjoy the lake, right, uh to enjoy our surroundings. Right? So now we're gonna discriminate high end people from low end people, it seems to me that it's all come down to money. Whether it be you, and or this board, right? We're looking to make money off you to support other things that the township might or might not need. Right, so just keep in mind.
What we're doing is trying to make the S T Rs pay, pay for the enforcement of holding the owners and the renters. Responsible for respecting the community that they come up here, year after year after year to enjoy. And disregarding the neighbors or the community. And specifically corporations, L L Cs, that are coming in here. And they don't care what happens in that building, okay, as long as the check clears the bank.
One last quick statement, just just, I completely agree, we are very similar, and we do rent to families. Multi generation families that are very respectful of neighbors, the township, the entire community. And these ordinances have been created for this small group of people that are not respectful. And that's the sad thing, and we're all basically here today, because it's a small group of people, neighbors or kids. Are not bringing in renters that are respectful of immigrant and stuff. So I just wanna caution here, one, let's not be restrictive of these families. Do not place too much of a burden on us losing, these multi generation families that are coming out of our homes. That are extremely respectful, they aren't paying high prices.
But you can't tell me that there's any reason. You should be advertising for a maximum capacity of a single property. That's capable of holding thirty-four people.
Gosh, no, we don't do that.
Just a few, yeah, just one thing, you were on septic uh right now, but. You know, I can't see in the near future where we don't have a public sewer system in that area, that's gonna eventually happen, happen, when it grow.
Yes, we'll uh.
Well, how are you gonna regulate the people volume wise, when there is no septic restriction?
That will be an amendment, they'll have to be made at that time, yeah.
It is, it is being looked at.
I mean, you talk about protecting the lake, that's really the only way.
You know, and and the, the thing about it's been recommended to at least me and probably this board. That a water and sewer system is basically required for this community in order for it to grow at all, all right? But, you're talking about twenty-nine dollars, right? Okay, I'm just saying, it's, we know, we all know that something like that would be. Now, and what we're trying to do here is come up with some reasonable way of protecting the lake. And Crystal Beach Road, Hoyle's, Arwood Trail, the water that people come up here to enjoy. Okay, from abuse of the septic systems that have been in place for fifty years.
Really, which is how we hold three from the township total, twenty-five hundred, forty-five hundred, we're probably not regulating a hundred. About that twenty-five, fourteen hundred and something.
Well, a hundred or so, we don't know yet. Okay.
And some, I had an idea, there about, three years ago, there was a complaint about a business that was on the lake. And a group, what was brought close, I believe it was in August of that year, was a petition. And I looked at it, and I looked at all the addresses, and only eleven of those complaints were actually addresses. In Milton, Helena, and Ra- and Clearwater Township, the rest were all over the world, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh. The world is coming after our property and towards like, I'm not concerned about people who live here, right here, come here. Certain times of the year, I'm concerned of the big money guys overseas that come and say you've got a property that's worth. Three million, and they come in, we'll give you ten millions for that, we've lost total control of that. We cannot protect our properties, whether you're a renter, any of those. We cannot protect unless we think ahead of that, because there are people out there thinking ahead, and they're buying up our properties right now.
So, here's, here's mine, if you want to say. The septic system that's in place determines the maximum capacity of that rental. Okay, if you have to change your septic system, your drain field, okay, to accommodate more people, so be it. Okay, I'm not the one charging thirty-five hundred dollars a week for a bedroom. Okay, and I know that to be a fact, as I looked up the first. Okay, so, anyway, uh I think we leave the septic restriction in there. The number of occupants. Uh basically would be limited by the uh amount of bedrooms.
And the size of the well and septic.
And we'll just see how that plays out, and if it has to be changed at a later date. Then so be it, but, and because we don't have a system, water and sewer system in this community, that's the way it is. We can't change that, what we can do is expect people to upgrade. To the best of their abilities, any, any, antiquated septic system to accommodate more people, more bedrooms. And therefore raise their max capacity. All right, um anybody else have any other suggestions to get us out of this?
About the total cap?
Total cap?
I think the cap is.
Cap would be determined by the septic system.
And when there is no septic system and we're on public service.
And we'll amend it?
No, it'll be determined at that point. Right, it'll be, it'll be determined next year.
Yeah.
And then if there's no paperwork on file with the public health department, the owner would be responsible for hiring a contractor, go out and inspect that system. And the drain field, and give the zoning administrator or the zoning board.
That's in six point oh seven, we'll, we'll get to well and septic.
Hey, report.
Then we get there.
Be cautious of the LLCs, which I heard you guys talk about, if you put too many rules, you're running like this, this, exactly the same people you don't want. The LLCs coming in and buying their properties, that's what you're gonna get, because when they, they're well organized. Uh open, and we'll go ahead and they know all the rules, how to get around them, they have the money to, to meet all the code. Where the small operators might not have the money to put a twenty-five thousand dollar advanced septic system in, because they have a little lot. Because they wanna change the septic system, and that, that's what we're going with.
So then they have, they uh basically can lie with the capacity.
I'm just saying, you're gonna, you're gonna end up getting more bigger players in here with more regulation, you will.
Well, now, wait a minute.
Should they be homesteaded?
Shouldn't be homesteaded.
Why then, Cardy?
Well, no, and here's, here's the deal, once we issue the initial licenses, there's a cap, you create a waiting list, all right? So, uh and then, from that point on, any license that is revoked, we reduce that cap number by one.
So if I, so if I pay taxes in this township, which I have forty years, so if I wanted to go and do something below the back line, just mail it something for three years.
Right.
That's, that's, that's fair too. You know, if I wanted to, if I wanted to rent a house out, that would be to the back of the line, which I have smacked.
Right.
When, you know, I paid the property on this for forty, taxes for forty years, that's not fair either, that's another regulation problem.
Discrimination, you can't discriminate.
You can't discriminate against the guy that only owned it for three years, even, right, yeah, they're all, you know, standard.
Okay, let's, let's drag on, real quick.
This gentleman's argument is the very reason that you need a hard cap, that will prevent anything going below that cap. Start, start with a hard cap of ten or twelve, if it works, you can take it up, but that's the reason you need a hard cap right there. It prevents people from coming in and working around the rules and say, well, here's a loophole, so we can have a bedroom here, we can have a hundred feet of septic there. And now we can put in four, five, six more people, that's the hard cap, that's permanent, that that is in there personally.
I, I don't think that. Okay, just my, my thought, and and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, adding more people doesn't get you more money.
Oh, yeah.
In your, in your rental?
Oh, yeah.
It does?
Yes, I can explain that very.
Thank you, cause I, I don't know.
If you are charging five hundred dollars a night, the more bodies that you get in there to help to pay that rent. One person rents it with a credit card, but in my instance, we have people that come in with four or six cars, then by the end of the night, there's ten cars. So have they gone out and, you know.
But I mean, as far as the, the, the owner, they're splitting the cost, but as far as the owner, you're not getting more money.
No.
For that night.
Yeah, I mean, if you say, my, my kind of, we could be, start doing references, we're trying to be very respectful.
What, what she said, and if somebody, somebody rents a, a place for five hundred dollars a night.
They're not saying five hundred and fifty.
And that invites all the friends in and invite all the guys at night, now you got twenty people in there.
Yeah, and that's what happens on a night like this.
No, 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 if I have a spot party, if I have a place, I got three bedrooms, I got, oh, I can add two bedrooms, increase my septic bill. I was charging five hundred dollars a night for the three bedrooms, I'm gonna charge eight hundred fifty, nine hundred dollars now, cause I have five bedrooms. That's what you're, yes, we can, I would, as a business person, I would.
Okay, so, the hard cap, if I had a lawyer, it should be twelve people at a time. Maximum, right.
He doesn't have a hard cap.
Suggestion, I have it this number twelve, which we read.
Yeah, that's the running, that's not from him, he didn't. He didn't add that. I don't know why that's in there, I've been there.
Basically their initial review.
This was the original from him. Anyways.
Okay.
I'm not sure on the cap, I'm just not, I, I mean, I think we're capping it by this, and we're capping it by this, and then we have our.
Yeah.
Another cap.
But I understand his.
I do understand that.
And I understand his argument, but uh. You know, problem with this, Crystal Beach is mostly fifty foot lots, you only put so much on that beach property. Okay.
Yeah.
So, if we're gonna cap, if we're gonna put a hard cap on it, give me a, twelve was suggested by Lee.
Okay, there you go, question.
I have two things to mention for my rental, which is in the middle of a hundred and forty acres with views. Um, we have a camera, that is connected to my phone, and I'll, you guys can do that too, and see how full your driveway is. If they lie, and they have six people rather than four, they get charged twenty-five dollars a night per person. They don't do it anymore.
It's because, you said you, you said you have twenty acre.
A hundred and forty.
Okay. You also being responsible.
Yes, remember, remember.
Regulate, regulate.
Put a camera above your porch, you can't put it throughout your house.
This is dealing with our one home, okay?
Okay, but still, our one home, put this, put a camera out by your driveway. How's the number of cars that come in?
Okay, well, this is.
We can't do that.
The other thing I wanted to mention, there's a new septic system out, we're gonna put it on our river lot. It is called the Algen system, and once the water goes through, the sewage goes through, you can drink it. It's out here, more dick wires.
The cap should actually apply to be at R one, R one district, and not overall, overall as. The entire land use district, because somebody owns acreage, all right, that has. Uh basically, uh, you know, uh, an accessory building or a guest home, or even their home, second home. That wants to rent it, uh and they have room for a, a septic system to. Uh, and they have room for, uh, a septic system to expand. To meet the, the bedroom requirements, this shouldn't affect it. What we're looking at is protecting the water, the water problem. So maybe this cap limit should be restricted to R one only.
You do have a cap with the two per bedroom plus two, you established that cap. That is a cap, right?
Yes, that's, yes.
As, as it sits right here, on the standard, applies to all land use. Not just R, R one, which would be Crystal Beach and, alright, so if.
What, what, what's wrong with that?
So they, they. If we're gonna cap the number of people, it's, the cap should apply to R one. And not, say, recreational, or agricultural, or. I mean, even, uh, uh, village. You know, because we're not on the water. So if you have room for, to expand your. Your, uh, well accepted, to accommodate.
So you're suggesting the two per bedroom plus two is only for R one?
No, that would be for everybody.
That would be for everybody.
Would be for R one?
That, that separates R one from all the land use districts. Which means, okay. If you've got, if you've got a five-bedroom house. Alright, in recreational, okay. Uh, the cap wouldn't, basically, uh, the twelve-person cap would not apply. To recreational, would apply only to the R one district where we're trying to protect the water. Okay, so if you have five bedrooms, you already got ten people, plus two, plus families. As long as the septic system was. Alright, and you're good. R one, what we wanna do is minimize the effect on the land.
If I'm in R one and I've got seven bedrooms, and I've spent the seventy thousand dollars for the septic system.
The new septic system, the Algen system.
And I've, I've done all that I'm supposed to do, I'm gonna get penalized?
It's illegal right now, it's commercial.
The, the person.
If you've got, you've got rented, you've got seven bedrooms, you're looking at fourteen. Plus two, sixteen. Alright, and then you're saying the kids, the kids don't count. Okay, so now you're talking. Right, and you're talking seven bedrooms. And the septic system's part of those seven bedrooms, then your cap is sixteen.
Right, two plus two. So we've established a cap.
Establish the holiday in.
Okay.
But wait a minute. My friend has that property, when that's not happening, and I'm inviting all of my friends, and all of my kids, and all of my kids' friends. Okay, so now there's.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're saying you're using the property. Okay, what's it say in the preamble?
Well, no, I understand that, I'm just saying that, that people are saying, well, it's a holiday in or whatever, I'm just saying. That I understand that I, I, I wanna be respectful and have, uh, fair and respectful guidelines, and I wanna bring the family in. With the, the children and the grandchildren, but when I'm not. Using the property for a rental, I'm using the property as per what you're referencing. And, and it's, it's worse than a holiday.
How many times a year? Would you have your whole family? Two, three, five? Not every day and every weekend, we live with it, every day.
Six, eight, eight.
This or six shall not apply to, to the use of the property by the property owners and their guests.
Right, I agree, thank you. I'm just saying, I'm not, my, I'm not a proponent of turning anything into a holiday, and I'm just saying, the guidelines. If, if you, if you, if you, you wanna involve the children and the grandchildren in this area, if you don't want the.
So what's our cap number for R one?
Well, two plus two.
Right, so, yeah, but, but he's suggesting, we put this in writing, alright, so if you have seven bedrooms. Alright, you've got two per bedroom, plus two, alright, so that's sixteen, so that number is. Well, but that would apply to all of R one.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to the deal where it's just so easy to add bedrooms, and it's easy to add septic system space, and, and you can up that number. And, and as was talked about shortly ago, that the more bedrooms and the more people you can accommodate, the more money you can spend.
But I'm saying, if we assign a number for a cap in R one.
Oh, yeah, this is a hard cap.
So he's saying seven bedrooms, I'm telling him, by calculation, that's sixteen, is that number acceptable?
Well, here's the deal, um, a seven-bedroom house that would sleep sixteen by going by this. Um, when it's used as private residential use is, is one thing, but when it's used as commercial activity. In residential district, and we can talk about that in length, if you care to sometime. I, I dug into that quite a bit, it's just not, it shouldn't be there, however. When he's using it as commercial activity, I think you need a hard cap, that's gonna protect the character of the neighborhood. You, you have to assume on a short-term rental that it's going to be rented at capacity, because that's what we do, that's what I do. I don't rent a five-bedroom house if there's two of us.
If we make a hard cap capacity at sixteen, then the people that don't have the capacity of sixteen. Can basically modify their property to. Basically bump it up.
There's a lot of money in the way, if they don't think it handles sixteen. They would have to have the land to make the adequate changes to their septic system, and they would have to get all of the permits and licensing. Required to do such an expansion, and if they don't have the land to, to do that, that restricts that problem by all.
What we're looking for, what we're looking for is a number. But I, I understand where he's coming from too. But yes, and your, the point is, you would have to, if you're going to add a bedroom. You have to change the septic system, and you have to do a comment, and if you don't have the room to do that, you can't do it anymore. What was the language?
This is a big single-family district.
Okay, what's the attorney recommended language in the section? What's the attorney recommended language in the section?
He said twelve is reasonable.
Twelve is reasonable.
So if we want, if we wanna stick in an arbitrary number, I would start with twelve.
Along the same lines, another question, how would the people that built mops be affected by?
No, what, I'm sorry, please, no, what?
That, basically, how would the people that have built mops and put in six bunk beds in there, how would they be affected by this? I just, I just, I wanna say.
Can we offer special use? For, for others who have.
Basically, what you would have to do. You would have to request a, a special use or exceeding the cap. Okay, so that language would be in there. So if you wanna add that, if we, if we cap this number at twelve. Special use, yeah, that would happen. So basically, what the, what the code enforcement officer would do, would go to the planning commission with a request for. A special use variance to the cap number referenced in here. In other words, if you wanted to have, have a family reunion at, at, at some place, and you were talking about twenty, twenty-four people. Alright, the cap number is set at twelve, alright, you would have to basically request from. The zoning administration office, uh, a special use request for that specific period of time to exceed the cap.
I, I don't want to exceed a cap, I just want the same rights that everybody else has to, outside of R one, two plus two. I mean, it seems like reasonable with the correct septic system, and, and if I've gotta, if I've gotta invest. Forty thousands, not seventy-dollar dollars in a fancy system to make sure that I'm abiding directly responsibly. Then that's what I have to do, or I can't do it, and remember, the intent is to protect the water.
Not only to protect the water, but to protect the integrity of our women, to fill our women's souls. Next is gonna be twenty feet.
But the capacity is about the neighborhood, you can also.
I, I think, uh.
We'll start with twelve.
First, I think we'll, we have to present those to the attorney to see if we can regulate them separately. With the cap for R one and no cap for every other area.
Well, the cap would still be based on the size. No, for all land use. What we're talking about in cap.
Well, yeah, yeah, that, but can we, can we do it different?
The lawyer will tell us.
The hard, uh, the hard cap number would apply to R one.
Right.
Our, our lawyer will tell us if it is, if it is, then we stay with twelve, if it's not.
Yeah, we can write it in there that way, and, and then.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave the number at twelve as the number for cap, and then.
Is a walk a bedroom?
I, I understand where you're going. Okay, when I was on the planning commission, we approved what they call guest apartment, our mother-in-law unit. On second stories on garages or accessory buildings, that's what that was intended for. This is something different, this is a dormitory built over a three or four car garage. bunk beds lined up.
How is this addressed?
And that is what we're looking at, septic system.
That would be addressed by the septic system.
Okay.
So.
Very good, thank, that answered my question, thank you.
So, uh, basically, a special use. Would be required to, uh, uh, basically violate the cap requirement. Okay, and that would be like a one-time deal, that would be for a special event, one-shot deal. Uh, if you have two or three families that are gonna be plus the cap, you would have to have a separate. Special use permit for those.
For a one-time event.
For, yes.
So if my house in there is suitable. I have to abide for.
In other words, okay. Are you talking about an R one property?
Yeah, yeah, R one property, I don't wanna have weddings or parties.
Okay, so what I was, what I'm saying is, anytime you exceed the cap, which is now set at twelve, okay? Alright.
Would be for that rental unit permanently, not just.
No, because then you'd have everybody and his brother, same thing. I wanna exceed the cap, this would be on a case-by-case basis. Basically, so if he has, if he has families lined up that exceed the cap all summer long, okay? He has to justify each request.
But that's, having a family is, is different than renting it out as a short-term loan, right? So, yeah. Family doesn't even pertain to the rent.
Well, it's family, I'm saying, but, okay, as if he's renting to somebody not related by blood or marriage. So we, we put a caveat in here for you to exceed the limit. Alright, but you have to request it every time you exceed that limit, and that would go through the GA to the planning commission. And they would look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Even if my home probably.
How many do you rent out now? What's the, what's your capacity now?
It's two plus two, I mean, I changed it a long time ago, just to make sure that I saw it coming, you know? Uh, that's what I do.
So, so what's your, what's your number?
I mean, I, I.
How many do you have?
Uh, what, fourteen, I mean, we're talking about how many bedrooms?
So you're renting more than fourteen?
Two and two, it's two and two.
Two and two, so you're looking at fourteen as your theoretical cap number, okay? If it's fourteen as number, then we all fourteen nine.
That's not total capacity, that's just adults.
Yeah, well, that's, this language accommodates minors.
It doesn't accommodate minors.
So, we make it fourteen? And it accommodates minors?
They're saying it doesn't.
How often do you rent a fourteen? All summer?
Forty-five or so.
It better goes overseas. It's gonna be neighbors, okay?
So, my question, let me cap the number. Okay, well, adjust it from there, we'll see how this goes, but anytime you exceed twelve, which would be the cap number. All you have to do is fill out a, a special use request for that period of time. During, and the code enforcement officer, he hands it to the planning commission, they pick it up under legal, and this would be all calendar. For my life then, right?
And that's twelve adults, eighteen numbers included.
That's kind of a difficult thing too, because.
But their calendar for reservations is supposed to be, uh, invited first table.
Really?
So if you're looking at anything.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
I rent two, three times a week, you know, so.
But shouldn't your parking, shouldn't your room definition, all this aligned, all way through, have the same requirements? You start taking and choosing different requirements for different categories. I think that creates some confusion, if you had a standard all the way across, wouldn't that make a little bit more sense? I mean, we made the definition around parking, and the criteria of rooms, the parking, why wouldn't you do the same thing? Just, um, by instead restricting as well, I don't understand.
Uh, there are two other line items on here, the one underneath that, the applicable, all applicable local, state, federal laws, that should be under conduct. And the next one, the noise during quiet hours, that should also be moved to conduct, those don't apply to capacity limit. And then, uh. C under that is overnight occupancy of renters in tents, it should say in tents. Uh, is prohibited, and then D is also not concerning capacity on that, a secondary dwelling unit. That should be addressed as a separate issue, and that's all under capacity.
So I ask, in tents, can you also put like campers while they're home?
It does say that, tents, RVs, campers, or boats.
Okay, you're looking at, uh.
Yes. Yeah, that.
Who's gonna handle the trial draft?
Well, we've kind of.
I've been updating this.
Tom will finish it now, I'll look at it, make sure it's the same.
But I mean, what I do is I go through for my notes.
I just wanted to make it clear, who is.
Rewrite the thing, and then send it out, if there's any errors or, that's when you comment. And, uh, correct any problems, so that the next time we sit down and do this, basically, we can boom. And, uh, correct any problems, so that the next time we sit down and do this, basically, we can, boom, send it to legal. And once it gets back from legal, we can schedule a public hearing.
Okay, so that website. The all applicable.
Right.
That's in conduct, and then noise, that's in conduct.
Right.
Question is, will the final draft, our draft before going to the lawyer, will that be on the list?
Before that can go in?
Will that be on the website, we can put it on.
Can you hide some user questions from the citizen?
We have a.
Obviously, there's.
The final draft, yeah.
Obviously, there's a, a lot of interest in what we're doing. Okay, so putting it on the website for the public to access it and comment from there. Prior to the public.
I don't think. That would be our final draft.
Right.
That we're gonna send to the lawyer, now it could change from there, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So is it possible for us to put, it'll be final draft, right?
That we get back from the lawyer?
No, they were asking before it goes to the lawyer, before, before it goes to the lawyer, our final draft, before it goes to the lawyer, did that be put on the website, so people can actually see it?
Basically, when it goes to the lawyer, it should be on the website.
That's what he just said.
In other words, in other words. To publish our final draft on the website. Uh, what are you suggesting, that we wait thirty days for comments on that before we send it?
Comments are done.
Bingo, that's what I'm saying, when we send the draft.
So they could prepare it for the public hearing after it comes back to the website, okay?
No, probably not, and that might, we just ask if we put our final draft on the website. This is before the lawyer gets it, okay?
Right.
So the citizens will actually see what we presented, and we'll change a little bit, I'm sure, from the lawyer's perspective, so it could change, and maybe we can put that on there too, just so there's clarification.
Right, well, basically, what I'm saying is, is when it's ready for the lawyer, it's ready for the public.
So the question was, we turn it on the website. Yes?
Not a problem. Not a problem, just what the last comment, just a little back or two, the.
No, we're past that. We're past that, why, what, I'm gonna state what we're not, why?
Why is there inconsistency in capacity across the world, it's gonna get consistency and capacity, you can bring that up at the public hearing. Okay, so it was cap of fourteen or twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve. Okay, and these get moved.
Followed in R one only, right?
Yes.
Yeah, R one. I have a, I have a little question, I was, was, Nancy called you in real quick. Okay, uh.
I think we're gonna have to stop there, it's, it's noon.
Is it now? Okay, let's, uh, okay, so the secondary dwelling in, uh, maybe you should stretch around, right? Okay, uh, that stays in.
Were you in it?
Yes, uh, since I'm five, actually. We've moved, uh, C, D, and E, it's conduct. Okay, yeah, it's secondary dwelling, and that would be the loft as an accessory building or guest house. Okay, secondary dwelling unit on a single parcel maybe uses a short-term rental, provided it has a separate license that meets the requirements of ordinance twenty-two hundred thirteen.
Where's that side?
Okay, and that would be treated basically as a separate short-term rental, with a separate license, with separate capacity. Yeah, okay, but, but it's still tied, tied into the septic unit, yeah, determines the overall capacity for the property, the two plus two.
So is that in the definition, or is that in, uh, license? That should probably go under license, so I guess.
About this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, probably, yeah, I would imagine, I can put this under, uh.
But check and see if there's another place that it should go, but.
I'll just put a question right there. Okay, so. Then next time, maybe they'll be phoned up, and then maybe then the septic came out.
Okay.
Well. Right.
They can't help themselves, they have a lot of, and they have a lot of great tenants.
Yes, well, they see things that we don't. No, so. But when it gets into a debate, yeah. Yeah, I know, I got a personal. Okay, so anyway, we will.
Can I, I just, I, I mentioned this in other meetings about a shared driveway, we have a shared driveway, and so the.
Yeah.
Two houses have right to, the Airbnbs have right to go down our driveway, um. And we, we've always maintained our driveway. And we just put out almost five hundred dollars in gravel just, just a month ago, who helps, who's gonna help us down maintain? We don't know these people, they're, you know, they're just people, we don't, how do we get ahold, maybe they should pitch in, because they're using it more than us.
Part of the application.
Pardon me?
Part of the application that has to be filled out, never will.
Responsibility.
Responsibly to help us maintain the driveway, because it's, it's all terrible.
Because it gets washed, or.
And because of all the traffic we get.
Traffic can believe.
So I'm wondering. Because.
Well, we have, we're just.
We were just wondering if, if there's somehow we can contact them and maybe help us fix our driveway.
The owners do not live there, so they only use it for renting.
Okay, so you don't, you don't, you know, own the property?
No.
Go on, go on the county, the county equalization page, okay, can you see GIF property ID? Okay, punch in the address, okay, in Clearwater Township, in the little search box, it'll take you to the owner. Mailing address, who pays the taxes on that property, so you'll have a chance to get it. Or just ask one of the renters.
Or, or ask, you can go to Don Koo's.
Well, then, you know, this is, this is the problem with having a shared driveway, now you've got us involved, we're involved in all this. Instead of just being a neighbor, yeah, we're, yeah, you'd be involved, right, because you have actually people, but now it's a shared driveway, we didn't want, we don't want to be involved in this, and now we are, we've made it, we've made it so. We've got us, and now our driveway's falling apart, and the actual traffic, and.
And this is a company, not.
And this is two houses, that one saves twenty, one saves fifteen, I mean, what? Both houses, so as far as a shared driveway, we can't get out of it now, we're, we're, we're stuck, so I, I think that's being unfair for people with a shared driveway.
Probably lower value.
You know, I don't know if there's anything in this about shared, maybe we should, they should be doing it with shared, we got us involved.
I don't think it's sounding like we're doing anything, anything, Mike, try to talk to him, maybe there's something that can be done ahead, I'm just suggesting, go to Don Koo, this is our land assessor. You know, and that way, she, she. And, uh, are they being assessed, uh, right amount, I'd have to let it to.
So this shared driveway is a recorded deed, basically.
Yeah, but, but owners aren't even there, there's.
And it doesn't, it doesn't say anything about maintaining, uh, in the, in the deed record, it doesn't say describing easement, anything about shared responsibility.
I've always done it, but now it's got, I've got my own tractor, my own stuff, but I've, I've spent thousands of dollars a year on gravel just trying to keep up, they pounded, it's like, it looks like an enduro tractor, anyway, I'm just.
You have a lawyer. Look up, look up the owner. You're responsible for the damage here. It's time for you to. I think you talked to a bunch of people coming along in Parkinson's. Yes, sir.
But second public comment, thank you to the board for all of this time, you know, it's a lot, it's a big commitment, and the speed limit signs are awesome.
Thanks to Mr. Peter Dinoz, we've been talking about it for two years. Yes, anybody else?
Sorry, is there a list somewhere that you can access to see the, um, the actual rental license numbers? Uh, because a lot of people are probably doing this under the radar and don't have.
Oh, nobody's under the.
So how do we find that out?
Everybody's one or just.
Once the licenses are issued, you will have a database with the owner, owner's agent, uh, the calendar, uh, any violation, all that stuff.
As of now, the accounts.
What we have to establish this first, so collect the information, put it in a database, so that if our zoning administrator, a code enforcement officer is looking for, or wanting to enter into. An owner's or a property ID, a violation, or a complaint, or whatever, he can do so, and that information would be available to the public. Okay, uh, that's all contingent on us getting this done.
You're a pretty good idea. Something like that in search.
Real quick. Thank you for all the graphics, it's not an easy topic, others, any, we'll listen next meeting. We will schedule that Thursday, at the Thompson boarding. We'll take this up again, okay, anybody else public on it? Okay, we standing there? Twelve oh four.